January, the March.
We gotta start the recording.
Oh, yes, please start the recording. Thanks, Nick.
Recording in progress.
There we go. Welcome, everyone, to the March 5, 2024 Winchester Planning Board Meeting. This evening, we are being recorded via Zoom. And I assume Wind Cam, let's see, is Wind Cam here? Wind Cam is here. Thank you very much, Wind Cam. If you do not wish to appear on the recording, please turn off your video and your audio. Let's see, I think we have everyone here this evening. Why don't we do a roll call vote? Carrie Layton.
Present.
Nick Rosettos.
Present.
Sally Dale.
Present.
Eching Scott.
Present.
And I am the chair, I am present as well. We also have with us this evening Winchester Town Planner Taylor Herman, Assistant Town Engineer Brian Manter, our Town Council Jay Tellerman, and Cast O R, our Recording Secretary Nancy Polkary. Good to see you again, Nancy. And that's it, we're off and running. So let us. We've opened the meeting a couple of minutes late. We have a public hearing coming up for reopening of the subdivision on Lauren Court. We have a ZBA petition for demolition reconstruction with two family home in GBD III. We have a quick overview of average on the flood mitigation project, which requires the planning board's signature. And then we also have further discussion of our MTA three A overlay zoning in our North Main Street. So are there any updates that anyone would like to bring up? Taylor, do you have anything for us?
We have a public information session for our Warren articles this upcoming Thursday, March 7 at 7:00 PM in the Winchester Room. We also have a public hearing for the same, for the same topic next week, Thursday, March 14. Virtually. Fourteenth, yeah. Those, those are my, those are my, those are my updates.
Okay, I should note that Taylor and I will be visiting the FinCom meeting on Thursday evening to discuss our budget prior to the Springtown meeting where we do budgets. Anything from the rest of the board?
Yes. So for the housing production plan, the first public forum for it will be next Thursday, March 13, virtually from seven to nine. And this is for members of the community to get updated on our prior housing production plan and some of the demographics that have changed. Discuss the needs of young adults, seniors, cost burden, households, update our housing goals and update suitable areas to meet state EO HLC requirements for local control. And this will be led by the, our consultants from M A P C.
Okay, thank you. Any other updates? Okay, well, we have seven minutes until our public hearing.
Well, I can update you on what I did this afternoon, which is I worked on the table of uses for mixed use District One. And I structured it to match the structure of category or use groups that are in our existing table of uses, Section 3.1, but it's a special one for our MU1 new mixed use district. And I captured all of the yeses and special permits and noes that came out of our discussions and that all of the yeses and special permits that are in the existing 3.1 under the category, under the columns for the existing GBD II and III. And I got that done and it's a work of art and I'll send it to Taylor.
All right. Thank you very much.
I can continue to throw more stuff out. So we have, as we all may recall, we put out an RFP for Economic Development Consultant month ago, two months ago, sometime within the last few months. We've narrowed that down to three options. We received seven, six or seven proposals. We've narrowed that down to three. We'll be reviewing, we'll be reviewing those three and then more, more information to, to come. Once the interviews are done, we can then share those proposals. There's some weird state rules about when they can be shared and when they can't. So. But that's a, that's a really exciting one. That's, that's coming up. I also met with the Chamber of Commerce last week at their, I don't know if it's annual or some sort of regular basis lunch to showcase our amendments and I don't know if this is a surprise to anyone on the board, but they were all in favor of, of zoning amendments, very much so. Particularly the North Main stuff we received very, very well. The parking numbers weren't as controversial as I thought they would, or as I thought they were, would be. But they were the most controversial part of the, of, of the whole thing. But the, the the concept of mixed use was supported by, by everyone. This is, this was a combination of developers and business owners, current business owners. And they're really excited to, to see what's, what's, what's to come. Actually, in fact, I've already received two emails from current business owners saying like, hey, what can we do with our property? What's our, what's our future looking like? Which I think is exactly what we're looking for. So good, good positive feedback on that so far.
That's great.
Great. That's great. Taylor, do you have a, do you have any idea of how the breakdown between actual property owners and business owners on the chamber?
I do not. I'm sure I can get, I mean, they're all, they're all members. So, so we can, we can find it out, but I'll have to ask Dana for that information. I don't know it.
Okay, because those are the ones, those are the real decision makers in terms of what's going to happen to the actual properties. Yeah. So according to internet time, we're at 7:27. We still have three minutes. We still have a few people who are coming in. I don't know if they're here for the public hearing or not, but we should make them, let's give them a chance to come in. I don't have anything else. I've been out of the loop for a bit. I don't have anything else to say. Well, I've got 7:29. Let's call it closeness to 7:30. And by the time we get all our introductions in order, hopefully people will show up. So we have, tonight we have a posted public hearing on reopening of the definitive subdivision on Lauren Court to amend the subdivision. Could I get a motion to open that hearing, please?
So moved.
And could I get a second, please?
Second.
And let's do a roll call vote. Carrie?
Hi.
Sally?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
Eching?
Hi.
And I'll say I as well. So we had a brief introduction to this last Tuesday, but first let me ask how many people who are attending this evening are here for this hearing? If you could just raise your hand, please. Okay. And how many of you from the, I see a couple of people from the neighborhood who are here. So if you wish to speak, we're going to open this up for public comment in a little bit. And if you just tailor, if you could let them all make it, make it so that they can speak.
I wonder if we might have just a brief recap, if that's possible of what, what we're discussing.
Yes, definitely. I just want to get our ducks in a row for to get everyone who wants to speak allowed to speak. So what's happening here is that there is the, the planning board approved of subdivision on Lauren Court. And if I get the the dates correct, this was in 2022. No, wait. Yep, this is July 2022. Is this letter worth the? It seems a little, let me just make sure of that.
It was, it was signed on July 12, 2022.
2022. So Lauren Court was a, is an infill property where there used to be a a rug cleaning and processing plant. It was, it went, the owner and the neighbors. it went, the owner and the neighbors went before town meeting a few years ago to rezone it to be residential. That was approved by town meeting. And then, uh, the developer, Robert Murray, moved forward with a subdivision on that property. Um, and is currently has one unit built, one unit under construction and one lot. There are three lots, which has not yet been started. Um, the agreement that was made with the planning board, the subdivision agreement calls for the completion of work on the lots prior to the release of any lot. Um, this is a little, um, so what, what we're, what's happening is that the developers come before us asking for the, um, board to approve release of one of the lots. Uh, to change the tripartite agreement to allow the release of one of the lots prior to all of the work being done. Uh, as they have an agreement signed to, for someone to purchase that lot. Um, so that's what's before us this evening. Um, historically, um, the reason that um, I believe that we, we made this agreement in this forum, namely asking for all of the work on all of the lots to be done prior to releasing any lot was because we wanted to ensure that development proceeded um, quickly and efficiently, so that there was, we wouldn't have the subdivision drag on for many, many years, which has happened in other subdivisions that have in, in town. We've had some divisions, subdivisions, which have been open for tens of years. So that's what's before us. So, um, at this point, um, I think if Mr. Tarby, are you speaking for, um, the petitioner here? Where are you, Mr. Tarby?
Joe, I received your email. You can, you can unmute.
Okay, can he, Mr. Chi, I can unmute him?
Yes, I can. And let me know if I summed up what you're requesting.
Yes, we were, we were muted. Um, okay, thank you. So Attorney Joseph Tabby, Wobin, Redman, um, five hundred, New Con Park Drive in Woben on behalf of um, Lockwin LLC. As you indicated, we have a request before the board for approval of an amended tripartite agreement and the release of lot one. Um, prior to this public hearing, we provided, um, you with a memorandum um, that summarized the documents that we had submitted to date, um, including the easement plan, a executed utility easement agreement, um, draft copies of a covenant and homeowners association. And then we submitted a revised covenant with two, two small revisions. One, they have the completion date consistent with the tripartite agreement. And, um, we corrected the, um, the planting strip, um, from two feet to one, one foot to be consistent with the plan. We submitted revised as-built plan of the drainage system and a certification from Machiander and Associates um, indicating that the stormwater recharge system on lot one has been installed in general conformance with the approved subdivision plan. We submitted the proposed amendment to the tripartite agreement. Also a request, uh, pursuant to section eight point four point three of the regulations to release lot one as well as the subdivision construction security pass table with cost estimated, um, to, um, twenty twenty seven. So as I said at the meeting last week, um, thi- this, Lauren Court is a, a, is different than the usual subdivision. Lauren Court is a paved private way that's been in public use for a number of years. There's two existing houses on the southerly side of the road, uh, three and five Lauren Court. And then formerly, um, there was a rug cleaning and warehousing operation at eighteen Lockman Street that occupied the north side and used Lauren Court for primary access. When the subdivision plan was approved, it was approved for the demo of the commercial building on the land that was rezoned um, a couple of years prior to the move from I L to I G. Um, was trying about a support and public support and allowed for the buildout of the existing cul-de-sac to provide frontage, the three lots to be created. So after the subdivision plan was filed with the, the town clerk, the commercial building and parking lot was demolished. The house at six Lauren Court, um, at lot one is, is now built. We have an agreement to sell, sell the property. Um, in addition, the underground electric and communication utilities were stalled. The request is again to release lot one, so that we can sell the lot to the, to buy, amend the tripartite agreement allowing for the release of lot. We're not looking for any reduction in the existing escrow. And then approval, lastly, the approval of the proposed covenant in homeowners association. So that's the summary of my request.
Okay.
Point of order here, Diap, uh, could we ask that Mr. Darby, Tarby, um, point his camera at? I, I, I think, I, I think the camera is pointed to the side. I'm not sure he meant that, and I can't seem to hear very clearly.
Okay, Mr. Tarby, could you reorient your mic and your camera? Um, we're looking at your side and I guess we've been here, um, some people are unable to really hear what you're saying.
Yeah, it's a little bit muffled.
Well, while, while, while he's doing that, I'd like to, um, and we can come back and I don't know if he's hearing us right now. Um, I'd like to go to, um, the assistant town engineer and, um, Brian, uh, where are you, Brian? There you are. Um, so could you comment on the status of the work on the common areas and utilities in terms of where they are, um, relative to completion? And what the, all of the paperwork that we've gotten in front of us, what that actually, um, what, what, just your, your, your understanding of the status of all that work?
Certainly. So with respect to the lot and the as-built plan and the stormwater system, it's the engineering department's opinion that the work on that, um, site has been, from a civil standpoint, has been done um, to conformance with the, the plans and the as-built information has, is in conformance with the standards and regulations of the town with respect to what it's supposed to show. The next step that the applicant will have to do though is to file the as-built plan along with the O and M, which is the operation maintenance plan for the stormwater system at the registry of deeds. So that's, um, like, uh, maybe the final thing that they need to do with respect to finalizing the work at, um, on the site with respect to the house. With respect to the common area work, the sub, you know, the improvements of the roadway. Um, I don't believe much work has been done to, uh, to move forward with, with that. The, maybe the developer could inform a little bit further, but there's nothing obvious on um, work being done there with respect to installing the granite curbing, installing the common area trees. But typically you may not, it's up to the developer to decide how the, where they wanna fit that into the workflow. Um, and as Mr. Tarby had noted before, this area is a kind of like a developed roadway unto itself, so they can continue to build on the lots um, with the, the current access that they have. Is that into your question, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I just, I mean, maybe there might be questions from the rest of the board. I just wanna, as we move into this, understand what stage this project is in.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's very important that, um, all that work be completed. I, I don't think we're under as a board, we don't have to vote for this. We're under an obligation to vote for it. And I, I, I think that we need to make sure that there's adequate, um, negotiating power on the, on the part of the planning board to make sure all this stuff happens. I've got more to say on that, but I, I, I just wanted to, uh, voice my opinion that I think that we need to, uh, make sure that this stuff happens first. I mean, there are plenty of buyers out there. They're gonna buy the house.
Okay, any, any, um, particular questions of Brian from the board?
I have questions. Um, and I wonder, Taylor, if you could put up the drawing that was actually twice in our packet. Um, it's this site, it's a site drawing with the house sketched onto it. Um, it's not the one that says, uh, easement plan of land. It's the one that has later in the packet, I get ahead and says, well, who knows what was later and earlier, but it has the house on it. Do you know what I mean?
I do. Let me look.
Applicants has it. Um, my questions are having, and while he's looking for it, it, it's really like what I read in the documentation is that it's a private road that's been used as a public way and that the subdivision is for three pro- three lots on the land that used to be the location of a carpet um, processing plant or cleaning and hanging, whatever. Um, when I look at the plot plan, um, it, it's a little bit ambiguous to me where the three lots are. Um, I can see, here, thank you. I can see on the plan that it says lot three, um, in the left large box, and it says that it's, um, I'm looking at how many square feet it says, um. So it says it's about twenty thousand square feet, lot three. And then when you go to the right, you've got lot one, which is sixty five hundred square feet. And then you've got, if you, um, zoom out and you see the whole lot, you've got these other, I'll just call them boxes for now. There's one, two, three, four, five other boxes. And it's unclear to me, um, whether, or what, what, what amount of this land is covered by this subdivision agreement? Or is it only the three that are touching this cul-de-sac structure? And if that's the case, what is this land to the center right? That if I zoom in on it, it says, uh, center right. Um, it says, loring, oh, okay, so I don't know if it says, she, no, it says loring to trust. So I'm just, I'm wondering if we could identify the lots that we're talking about. I understand from another document in our package that the house is built on lot three. Is that correct?
I think it's lot one.
It's lot one. Okay, so it's the tight one in the middle. Um, so I just, I just need a clarification of what the scope of the subdivision is. And, um, once I understand that, then I really wanna know what was to be done before you would release any property as a sale. Um, and I noticed in your package that you have a short list of things that remain to be done. And is that list inclusive to the point that all the work that you promised you would do? Whether, uh, at the time that all three lots were ready to go, um, has been done. So that's how confused I am. Thank you.
Um, Taylor, could you, um, outline with your mouse maybe what the extent of the lots are? Just so that we get that out. So it's
So we have, we have lot one, lot two, lot three. We also have a utility easement in the middle, so we have this section in the kind of darker line. It's the easement.
That's helpful. So the other
Act of lot two.
That, that other land was part of the Budakian property, but it's been purchased for other uses by other persons. Is that what it is?
No, it's still part of that property.
So it, is it part of the subdivision?
Yes.
So does that mean that the subdivision terms, in terms of getting all of the public services and infrastructure delivered before they release a house, except as we would make an exception? Does that cover everything down to the road below on Lockwan Street?
I don't know what was slated for that little act, that easement there. I don't, I think it was
Three, there's one, two, three boxes that go to the corner of Lockwan and I don't know what this, Loring Avenue. That's what I'm confused about. Is it just Lockwin Court? I mean, look, excuse me, Loring Court and not the corner lot?
It is just those
Yeah, this, this is not included. This is not included. This is not included. This is not included.
Okay, that's really helpful. So now I'm oriented to where the, I, cuz I can remember the Budakian building being there. So now I understand what I'm, where I'm looking and what I'm looking at. Thank you. Um, but so going to the status of what was promised and what's not in or is in, if we could just get clarification on that.
So can, can we get, can we an update on, on what, I mean, we have a lot of paper here, so let's talk about the utilities.
Water, Mr. Chair, the water and sewer have been installed, um, in accordance, um, with town standards and they've been approved by DPW. So from a water and sewer standpoint. Um, I'm sorry?
Brian, for all three lots, water and sewer properly installed?
Um, I'm not sure where they stand for lots two and three, but for lot one, they do have the water and sewer services in there. And, um, in addition, the water line that loops through the cul-de-sac at Lauren Court and through that utility easement to Lockwin Street has been installed and approved as well. So that provides that system redundant. Didn't see a water loop that we, we try to see in our subdivision. So from a public utility standpoint, the public utilities are installed and in the utilities for lot one have been installed, the water and sewer.
Okay, um, the other utilities would be electric?
Uh, yes, um, but I didn't, I didn't inspect the electric stuff, but I assume it's in there.
Um, Mr. Tarby, could you comment on the status of electrical, of power to the subdivision?
Okay, the electrical, um, and communication utilities are, are all installed.
And that's, is that for each of the three lots?
Is it, is it both? Yes. Yeah, for all three lots.
Okay, and do you have, um, individual water and sewage going to each of the three lots?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Um, do you have water and sewer lines going to each of the lots?
Uh, well, the water line is, is looped, um, from Lockwin to Lauren Court. And what, what about the sewer? Okay, so going to Mr. Mari, um, the sewer is at lot three, but it's not connected yet because he hasn't started constructing the house there. What about lot two? One and two is connected.
Okay, and so, and lot two is the one which is in the, is currently under construction?
Correct.
Okay. So, uh,
But I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, I just, I just wanted to comment on, you know, there hasn't been a request to reduce the, um, escrow amount. The escrow amount was the amount set at the beginning of the development of the subdivision. So there's been a lot of work done. Um, so the, the balance, well, the, the entire amount is not, there's no request to reduce that. So the town probably has a lot more, uh, security than when this subdivision began construction. I just wanted to point that out and I, and as I did at the onset, you know, this is a little different than the usual subdivision where there's already people living on the right side of this um, subdivision. There's, um, a roadway that has adequate access to three and five Lauren Court as well as lot one that we're trying to release.
Yep, we're just trying to get clarity on what's actually, I mean, it's a little confusing with all the documents. We're just trying to get clarity on what state everything is in.
So, Diap, can I ask about the road?
Sure.
Um, so is, cuz I look at the list, you have a, a list that stated a couple of days ago that was things that needed to be done. The remaining work is as follows, and it has like ten bullets. And my question is, do those relate to the cul-de-sac road being a finished street?
Could we, could we, um, Taylor, do you think you could put that page up?
Looks like that. It's a one pager.
I'm not sure who, who wrote it. It doesn't have
It doesn't say. It says remaining work, February two.
In your packet?
Yes, it was
Yeah. Yeah, it just says, uh, sort of ten things.
Well, they're num- they're not numbered, but it's about ten, one, two, three, four, five, yeah, whatever. Well, they're not, they're not numbered, but it's about 10, one, two, three, four, yeah, whatever.
It was dated February 2nd, 2024.
Yes.
Yeah.
It was in our packet.
There's no author on it, so I have no way. It looks like this, Taylor. I don't know if that helps.
I'll, I'll, I'll try to find it.
Okay. Just for the public records, so public people can see that. You want to go ahead with your question, Sally?
Well, so, so to our general concern as a community that we make a subdivision and we have it in the terms of the subdivision that the developer will finish all of the common assets of that subdivision that benefit the residents and the town as a, as a, as a whole. And so to me, that would include finishing the road. And what I see here is that there's these eight bullets, which I think relate to the road, but I'm not entirely sure. For instance, the installing stone bounds could apply to all the lots. But these, and these will be done this construction season. To me, these are the things that it's really important that they be done, like the concrete sidewalk and the curb and the grass strip and the top coat of pavement, that all that done, be done before they start selling properties. And I understand that the applicant has got one house ready to go and they want to sell it. And if, if we were to say you could just go ahead and do that, it would be without the road being finished. Is that correct?
Well, the road is Loring Court, which is an existing road. So I guess the question would be, what exactly is, which, where's the gravel base being installed? And there's certainly, I mean, one of the questions we might ask is, and we go to Brian, Assistant Town Engineers. At what stage in a subdivision do we typically see these finishing? I guess, I don't know if you call them finishing, at which stage do we typically see this work done? Is it prior to the, is it after the construction of the houses or is it prior to them?
Mr. Chair, that's a great question. My experience in town with subdivisions kind of carries over from Abbey Road. In the case of Abbey Road, some of that work wasn't, if we were to use Abbey Road as a proxy to what we see here. Not all the work was done on Abbey Road subdivision prior to houses being built, as you may know. And then, once the construction, but once the roads are done, I believe, I'm sorry, once the buildings are done, then the, then they, the contractor would go in and finalize everything. And the reason for doing that is so they don't damage curbing or ruin the top coat of the pavement during, during the construction activities of the house. And in ancillary to building the road, there are other items like installing stone bounds or raising castings, which all kind of relate to, you know, the final paving. And so that, that's generally how you see the work. Generally, my understanding is building a subdivision is to create an area where you can go in and build the lots and then you finalize everything once the lots be built, so you don't damage your finished product. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and it would make sense because I wouldn't want to see the eight trees planted if there's heavy equipment going up and down the cul-de-sac when they're trying to get established. Returning to the plot plan that Taylor had, there was a cul-de-sac easement on a property to the north, or I should say up. I guess it's north. In the drawing, it was a semicircular dashed outline on, on the properties that are on the other side of the road. And it says, if you back out a little bit, yeah, there, it says roadway easement. Is that constructed and poured and in place? Because that's part of the roadway that's part of the development, right?
It's my understanding and perhaps the applicant can confirm or deny my understanding. But that's part of the extension of the cul-de-sac, so they're going to make that bulb area a little bit larger. So in order to do that, you'd have to cut some asphalt out. That's what some of that gravel base would be there for. So they're basically expanding the, the size of that cul-de-sac area. So that, that's my understanding of what that is for.
Does that have to be done bef, if, according to the original agreement, was that work that would be done before any of the houses would be conveyed or what we call it?
Yes.
So does the fire department care if that little half moon of land gets turned into road?
The fire department already has access to those areas right now. Those are existing homes that have been there for a while, so they may prefer to have a larger turnaround, but I think they can certainly access the structures as they are now.
Right, right.
Is that your question?
Well, I guess the reason that it was turned from just a dead end street with no circle at the end into a, a street that has a circular cul-de-sac is, I assume that was done because fire departments prefer that, so they can turn around.
To be honest. To be honest, Sally, I don't recall, and I'm surprised to notice that many of you are actually on the, I thought this, we did the subdivision before you and I Ching came on the board, but you guys were sign, signatories to the subdivision.
Yes, we were. It was very, very early in our
Yeah.
service on the planning board.
So I'm hoping you might be able to dig up on memory of that. Nick, you were going to say
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm eager to hear the comments of the public. From the fact that
Yes, please, and, and I'd like to get one comment from town council about the covenant.
Okay, so the proponent, Mr. Tarby mentioned a completion date and that you would, you would I think what I heard was that you would still follow that completion date. What is that completion date and what does that mean?
Well, the, the completion day would be the day which everything would be finished.
Is, is there a specific date associated with that?
I believe, did you ask for the, the date that was proposed? Yeah, November, November 23rd.
Okay, so then in the initial proposal, there, the, the idea was to release everything on November 23rd. So I try a little bit, what changed between then? What's the intent here? And why, why are we, why has the plan changed?
I think originally it was November 23rd, 2022, is that right? And you want us to change it to 2024?
That is correct.
It's on your
I, I, I think we need to, well, anyway.
Form E4 and it's, it's under now therefore, and it's paragraph four and be replaced with November 23rd, 2024. And so to I Ching's question then, thank you.
Yeah, what, what has changed? What, why? When you first proposed it, it seemed like it was going to be three homes completed, done, close it out two years ago. Now, or maybe a year ago. But now you're asking for one lot to be released in completion date a year, a year and a half from now. So what, what changed here?
Well, it took, it took some time because of all the environmental laws to demo a cleaning business building that had chemicals in it. And then there was also a wait for the utility companies in order to install utilities to the, to the subdivision. Those are the two, two biggest delays.
Okay. And then just an orientation question, the easement here, the 10-foot easement on lot two and three. That's a utilities easement for the utility companies as well as for the resident on Lockland, is that right? Or I'm sorry, Lockone? What, what is that easement for? Is that for town, town services, utilities? As well as private passage?
No, it was private, private utilities.
I'm sorry, private utilities?
There was no delay on behalf of the towns, private utilities, private utilities.
Private utilities.
So there's no That was a water and sewer easement. That's what you said before.
Yeah, the water, the water and sewer, as we indicated, is installed out to Lockwin.
Okay.
In that
That was asked for. Okay, that, that helps. So that, that helped with the clarification of the dates and the reasons why for me. Thank you.
I, I'd actually like to follow up on that. What would be done? Would you, you're, you're suggesting that by November 23rd, 2024, all three lots would be completed and the road would be completed? What, what is finished on November 23rd, 2024?
Are you talking about the list that was just submitted? Yes, so everything on the list that was just up on the screen will be finished.
So what would, how long would lot three be incomplete?
You're talking about building the house? How long would it take before we build the house on?
Yes.
All the work.
Are there plans for that? Is that lot, I, so the, the, you're mentioning the escrow amount and that, that's part of it, and it's definitely part of the enforceability of this. But we, we also represent the neighborhood and we have to think about the town and what we're telling subdivisions. So if you commit to building three houses and one lot sits sort of indefinitely. So we need to know when is the complete approved process going to be wrapped up? What, what's the timeline for that?
Yeah, when, when would you expect to build the third house? In November, we want the third house. So Mr. Mari indicates that even third house will be done by the November date. And, and again, that would include everything on the list that's on on the screen.
So we would be promising the neighbors that you would be done hauling trucks up and down making noise at all hours and leaving the road disrupted. That will wrap up in time for Thanksgiving 2024. This, this is the promise we're making to the neighbors.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Mari indicates, yes.
So I think this is a good time to hear from council.
Yeah, so Jay Calamand, Town Council, just to lead off a couple of things. One is that, of course, before anyone buys a house, we do need to have that HOA in place. And so I'm wondering if you could speak to the draft covenant that was presented by Mr. Tarby as to whether it meets what you think it follows good practice, et cetera. And then also a discussion as to the revisions to the tripartite agreement that have been proposed.
Let me, let me ask a couple of questions before I give some comments here. So my understanding, and I might be wrong, is that there's, there's not an existing covenant in place now? It's just the tripartite agreement?
That is correct.
Okay. So I don't quite understand. So your tripartite agreement is actually kind of a combo? It actually includes provisions, one in particular that is akin to a covenant because it not only has financial security, but it precludes the transfer of properties. So it has elements of both. I think that's protective for the town. I have no quarrel with that. The parties obviously went into it. I don't know why we would have both at the same time. However, it's even under your subdivision regulations, it's one or the other. A covenant is a non-financial security device. And they work well, usually at the beginning of a project because it precludes any conveyances or sales or occupancy permits until the infrastructure is done. And generally, as a developer starts to do infrastructure and wants to start selling or at least marketing, they will switch over to financial security to do the remaining work. You wouldn't normally have two different security instruments in place at the same time. You know, at, at a certain point, regardless of what security instrument you have, if you're going to release a lot and it's always dicey with a smaller subdivision, you want to make sure that you have adequate security that in either, that's either financial or precludes the sale of enough remaining lots so that there's an incentive for the developer to finish the work. So I'm not sure you need both. I, I so it would normally be one or the other. I can review and, and I'm, I'm a little bit negligent for not reviewing this for tonight, but I've been at a trial, working on a trial all week, so it kind of captured most of my time. So I'm okay, i- if the parties want to double up here, I guess there's no legal barrier, but it doesn't seem to me to be necessary. All the things that are important to you in a covenant, you could probably bake into a tripartite agreement. Like I said, this tripartite agreement already has a covenant, some covenant language in it. It's not just straight cash. It's also preclusion of, of sale as well pursuant to a specific term. As to the form of these, I could review them and get them in the shape. I have, I, I have a set of forms for covenants and tripartite agreements that I think are most protective for towns, and I'm happy to, to share them with Taylor and the board. But I'm just not sure why people are proposing both. I do agree that there should be a common sense deadline to complete work in whatever instrument you're doing.
I, I would agree with you, Mr. Talman. I think we're fine with the tripartite agreement.
This covenant says on paragraph two subsection A or paragraph two A, that the construction of the way shall be provided before lot one, two, or three are occupied or conveyed. So that would imply that this covenant is like before what you're asking for today, which is to not have to do lots two and three occupied or conveyed. So I'm just confused about whether the covenant is in place now or is this proposed? And if it's proposed, is it not, is it proposed but not up to date with what you're asking for?
Certainly seems to be an issue. Mr. Tarby, could you comment on two A?
But when the, under lot two A, the applicant would still have the ability to request or release a lot under 8.4.3.
Right.
Paragraph two A of the draft covenant, at least I assume it's a draft. It's the document that has the 3715907 in the bottom corner.
It states that the way shall be completed before, prior to lots one, two, or three being occupied or conveyed, which would imply that you need to finish the work on the road prior to letting anyone occupy any of the lots.
Right, subject to the request under 8.4.3, asking the board to waive that requirement.
And that's, you're, you're quoting a section of the subdivision by law?
There's not that request in the actual covenant. Can you, I mean, it's, it seems to state very clearly that you have to complete the way. And it doesn't say anything about asking for the planning board to waive that.
Well, your regulations allow us to make that request.
That's what I was asking. Is it in the subdivision regs, this 8.4.3?
And I think we can, as Mr. Talman indicated, I think we only need one, one document and we're okay with the tripartite agreement as as revised and submitted to the board.
Okay, so
Okay.
So I don't have an objection to that, Diab, in terms of, so my goal as town council would be to make sure you have a document that, that you feel is adequately protected.
Yes.
To the extent that, that document, which is financial security primarily, but also has a provision that says you got to do the work before the planning board is going to release a lot. I don't mind building into that a process whereby in your discretion, if there's adequate progress and you want to let a lot go, that, that you have that power. I think there's some safeguards on that in a process I'd like to build into it. And, and I promise that I, I will pay some attention to the drafting of that over the next couple of days. But in, at the end of the day, you're going to have to be satisfied that, that there that, that there is still enough leverage and security in the remaining, whether it's the cash or the remaining building lots to incentivize the developer to do the work. I mean, I hear a significant number of concerns here. I don't know enough about what's going on on the ground there to assess whether or not there's adequate security either in cash or in a number of lots in the tripartite agreement now. But it, it's fairly typical for us to work around a process whereby at some point a developer can come to you because we want the developers to succeed. Otherwise, they abandon projects. At some point, maybe they've done enough work for you to say, okay, we'll release a lot, but it's always your discretion and that should be respected in the document. And I don't mind building that in as I go through the tripartite agreement and we kind of um, put in the necessary safeguards. I'm hearing some concerns about a deadline and when this should get done, that should be in there. Enough of a inspectional criteria for you to be satisfied at any given point in time as to the release of lots or any of the money that's in it. All those kinds of things are pretty par for the course. The tripartite agreement is a pretty protective instrument already. Um, I would probably want to, you know, you know, uh, buff it up a little bit. But, um, I think we can work with it and give you the assurances that you're going to get what you need while still allowing a developer such as this developer, assuming they do the work that they're promising to do, some avenue by which they could get the release of a lot if they can convince you that it's in the best interest of completing the project.
Okay, I think that's, that's a great assurance. And, and if the board decides to go that way, it's, I'm, I'm, I'm reassured by your statement. One, one other thing I wanted to ask you is if you had a chance to look at the homeowners association agreement?
No, that, that would come along with it and I will. I, the only thing I really get concerned about the homeowners agreement, how they govern themselves is is basically up to them from a business perspective or a, a, a rights perspective. I will be most concerned when I go through it um, to make sure that all of the homeowners are forever bound by all of the instruments on the municipal side. That's really what I care about. And that they will be responsible for the, the roadway in a responsible way to continue to maintain it. Other than that, their general governance stuff, I don't get too concerned with. That's their call. I just want to make sure that this road isn't going to fall apart.
Well, so that's interesting. I thought that what the idea was that they would, the road would be turned over to the town as a public way.
Well, that did this town not so much. In general, Sally, town, that does happen pretty frequently. And town meetings accept public ways and, and that is certainly still possible. And for this road or any road in Winchester, my general understanding of, of Winchester is that acceptance of subdivision ways as public is a very rare event.
Okay, because it has, it's a section in our regulation, section nine. I guess.
And it does.
Use it.
It doesn't surprise me, but acceptance as a, look, we want to make sure that if the town, that there's enough teeth in the tripartite agreement and in your subdivision decisions, that if it is going to be presented to the select board for laying out as a public way, which then would require or trigger a requirement by the planning board to give a recommendation to the select board, that the planning board would be able to make a favorable recommendation or an unfavorable. So that process will be kind of built in here, but ultimately while it is private.
Oh, because I'm, I'm just.
While, while it is private, we want to make sure that even if it's not public, you know, that it's still going to be some trail of responsibility for maintaining it. I mean, we got to get fire trucks up there still. And we do, the town does allow a fair number, in fact, more than a fair number of private ways in town.
Yeah, there's something a little, little crazy. I, I'm a little confused. It says that parcel A, which looks like a part of the semicircular drive is to be conveyed to the town, even though the rest of the road is public. So we'll have to figure that out. The only, um, I, I would love to, um, get to public, um, input. I just had one last question. Um, so we get some of the details down and that is, um, Assistant Town Engineer Brian Mantor, um, when we look at the closeouts on this project and the seventy five thousand dollar, that's an escrow, could you give us an estimate of what you think those closeouts might? Is the seventy five thousand sufficient for that? I know that there was equity in the, in the lots and the, and the houses, but seventy five K is what's in the bank.
Certainly, yeah. So that seventy five K was, um, originally to give some step back. So the applicant provided like an estimate of what those costs would be to close out the project. Um, and then the engineering department reviewed those costs. But in conformance of the subdivision rules and regs that we had to, um, add some escalators to that. So their original estimate came in about fifty thousand dollars or so to close out this project, basically to close out the roadway work, finish work. So final paving, adjusting castings, installing curving and sidewalk and such, so forth. And then so from that number, it was escalated by ten percent for the regulations. But then on top of that, it was, we had to project an estimate for, um, additional costs for five years down the road in anticipation that perhaps um, any developer, not just this project, but any project in general that we have costs to cover if it's not done in a timely fashion, which the applicant appears to, that they want to do. So that, um, based on some analysis, it looked like we increased that a, a further twenty percent more on top of what the original estimate was. So in summary, um, the, uh, engineering department is not looking to a, a, adjust the current seventy five thousand dollar bond amount at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other comments from the board? Before we, we open it up for the public? Okay, um, if you would like to speak on the matter, um, please raise your hand and we will recognize you. And if you could, uh, state your name and address and your relationship to this project or to the neighborhood. Taylor, I will let you, uh, pick who goes first.
Just going to go in the, I'm just going to go in the order of hands raised. Uh, Rihanna, uh, you may unmute and.
Thank you, Taylor. Uh, Brianna Burns, attorney at McLean Middleton on behalf of the buyer of lot one. Um, I just wanted to quickly jump in and, uh, give a practical, real life, uh, situation that we need to think about, I think, as well, rather than just the de- developing side. Um, I know that you have heard assurances on both lot two and three that you have, uh, construction going on and you have seventy five thousand dollars as the engineer has stated that you don't, uh, are not requesting anymore. So I'm not going to get into why I agree with all of that. But just to, uh, let everyone think about the buyer who is in temporary housing right now with his children and that's waiting to buy this house that he is in love with. I know Mr. Rosetto said there are plenty of buyers for the developer, but there are not plenty of homes for this buyer. Um, so we are really trying to get into, to this home and have my client, uh, have a house for his children. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, you may unmute yourself.
Hello, um, my name is Jim Mariko. Um, I'm here with my wife, Claire, we're the owners of Three Loring Court. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so I grew up in that house back in the late nineteen fifties and, um, um, you know, now, uh, I've become the owner of the house. My daughter and a son-in-law, my son-in-law live there. Uh, we, we certainly have been, you know, very supportive of this project. Uh, we still are very supportive of this project. And I understand the issue with the family as their attorney just, um, um, described. I, I mean, I, my, my concern as an owner of the, of the property and the road being a private way, we want at the end of the day, the road to be constructed and put back, you know, to the, to level of quality that it should be. And I, I guess, uh, you know, I, I agree with the town engineer. Being a retired civil engineer myself who practiced for forty years in Massachusetts on many development projects. Um, I would like to see the major, the construction completed before the road is final paved and turned, turned over because as I, as, as he indicated and I've experienced, things happen, there's going to be a lot of construction for, uh, lot, lots two and three, heavy trucks. Somebody needs to do some, uh, something else. I would rather see, um, the final paving done after everything is, is completed. And then finally, I guess on, on this, it's, again, my questions are more sequencing, I think. The, the document that we talked about a few minutes ago with the ten bullet items to be completed, it doesn't reference anything about lots two and three, in particular, three, the houses being built. Um, I think Mr. Murray indicated a little while ago that, that he wants to complete all of the work, including two and three by November twenty third. I mean, I would like this, uh, excuse, November twenty third of this year. Shouldn't that be included in the work to be completed and have that documented that that's what's going to happen? I think that's, that's my, uh, the extent of my comments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Lorna, you may unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. You can.
Okay, um, I very much, uh, mirror what Jim said. Um, I'm Lorna Riordan. I live in Five Loring Court. And I just wanted to say that, you know, we've been very happy and, you know, everyone that's been working there has been very accommodating to all the coming and going from the house. But I would agree, I would like to have a timeline on, on all the houses being finished and just to have safety on the road again with the kids and the dogs. And it was just something to be aware of and I would like to have it completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public out there?
Carrie, would you be comfortable, um, speaking to the gentleman that you spoke to this morning?
Yes, and I don't have, uh, the gentleman who lives at the corner of Loring Court and Loring Avenue, um, Anthony's last name, I moved away from where I wrote it down. He raised significant concerns about the length of time the construction has been going on for um, and the disruption to the neighborhood and the condition that the road has been left in. Um, and would, would like us to make sure that we are upholding the agreement that we have with the developer. Um, he feels, he feels like it's been a low priority for the developer and he, then they're sort of become a forgotten project and he wants to make sure that his voice and the neighbor's voice are heard and sort of getting this wrapped up, which sounds like it's, um, in line with the neighborhood. And I'm sure the buyer as well. I mean, I'm sure the buyer doesn't want to move in and wait for lot three to be built either.
May, maybe if we can, uh, get all the houses built, uh, the, the family can move in and we can get that done quickly. I think two years is already too long.
So I want to respond to one thing that Mr. Erico said, which is good common sense in my view, that we don't want to put the finish course on the road until all three houses are built. Um, but we definitely want there to be a binder course, for instance. And so there is some work that can and should be done to improve the physical infrastructure of the existing road, even um, before the other two houses are built, because those things will not be hurt by the construction equipment. And, and if it's at risk of being hurt, there's ways to put down mats on roads or lawns or dirt areas to protect the, the land and the, and the building or the infrastructure. Um, so I mean, I think that some of this work we should say that we should get it done quickly so that the feeling that it's just been a construction site and a big mess for all this time can start to be mitigated. And the other thing that I want to say is I don't see anything about stormwater drains on this little street. Um, and I don't know if engineering has required stormwater drains in this little street, but I don't see them there.
Now that I can speak to that, so, um, there are in Loring Court, there is a stormwater, you're in a public stormwater, well, I don't, it's a common storm drain with a catch basin that flows down Loring Court towards Loring Ave. With respect to the storm, uh, the stormwater systems on site for each individual lot, the engineering department did not require any stormwater mitigation, um, for the, for these projects. And I just want to note that the applicant or the developer has put that in on, on their, on their, on their own volition. So, um, and some of what they have installed.
But did the public street doesn't need to have a stormwater drain if there's a heavy rain?
Uh, it currently does have one.
Yeah, you said it was down by Loring Road or Loring Avenue?
Yeah, there's a catch basin in front of Five Loring Court. And that captures the, it looks like some of the, the, the topography pitches toward, depth from Loring Ave towards slightly towards the cul-de-sac area of Five Loring Court.
So that would mean, would that mean that the entire Loring Court needs to slope enough towards that drain to pick up all the rain that would be on Loring Court? And i- if that's the case, it should be assured before they, um, well, in the process of doing the partial work and then the completed work to create the road.
Yes, part of the work, um, is that there, I guess to answer your question, uh, may I didn't answer it correctly, but there is an existing drainage system there. There is an existing catch basin in front of Five Loring Court. And part of the final product is that the from in front of lot one, give or take, it's going to be repaved and regraded all the way to the end of the cul-de-sac. So in that, in that process, you would that, that process would inherently create positive flow towards that catch basin in, and, um, you'd have good site runoff and drainage on that section of road.
So can you, as an engineer, look at the list of the ten bullets and say which ones of those things could happen earlier, like now, or as soon as things get less than totally muddy? Um, so that the neighborhood feels less, um, subjected to construction mess?
Um, I, not one hundred percent have the speed on that bullet list.
Yeah, and I wish that the author had put their name on this. Could we have the author in the room?
Could I make a, could I make a suggestion for process here, um, before we get caught up in, in these too many details on this? I think, I think it's, it's worth taking a step back first. And so the question before the board is whether this request to release the property is, uh, is, is, you know, the positive impacts outweigh the negative impacts? If we do request, if we do agree with this request, what sort of, um, sure, what sort of, um, let me just call it surety because I can't think of a better word. We want to have from the developer to, to make sure that the project is completed by the end of November. And what are the interim milestones that we want to see reached so that we, we, um, can do essentially what you want to do, Sally, in terms of making sure that the neighborhood sees progress and there's some response to their needs for security on the road. But I think that the big thing before the board right now is, does the board wish to approve the, this request to, um, allow release of lot one? And we have, we have a hand up from Philip Vita. I don't know who Philip Vita is.
Is, uh? He may be a local real estate broker. Agent.
So, I mean, I, I, I think we've heard from the neighborhood. We've heard from a representative of the person who wants to move in. We've heard from the developers. Does the board want to take up the discussion as to which way we want to go on this?
I think you should because it's eight thirty right now and we.
Yeah, I think this is, I, I, I think that, well, I don't think this is a good idea. I, I, I think, um, I, I, I had a conversation with the constituent earlier today that, you know, that there's a history of broken promises. And I, I think that we really need to look at precedent when, when you, when we ask for something to be done within a certain period of time, that, that at least a, a, a minimum attempt be made to, to complete the project. I don't think the escrow is enough of an incentive. I think all the houses need to be completed. And we, we just need to not cave and, and, uh, I, I don't think this is a good idea. I, I think we need to, to. I, I, I don't think this is a good idea. I, I, I think we need to, to uh, uh, stick with the original agreement.
Okay.
I, I'm just curious to know who Mr. Vita is and why he has his hand raised and whether it's helpful to the conversation.
Well, I, let's, let's see if the, can we, can we ask, I just wanna know if the board wants to hear from Mr. Vita or do we wanna deliberate?
I think we probably need to deliberate, I, I um.
Okay, uh, Echung?
Um, so, I mean, thanks for that, Nick. I, I, I appreciate some of the uh neighborhoods comments, including the one from Carrie as well. Um, I, I think that um council's assurances on that we have enough safeguards, um, that the escrow and the lots are enough leverage for us to finish up. I am feeling like the utilities um have been seemingly pretty um fully implemented and um wanting the developer to succeed and continue and hearing that the buyer, buyers are very anxious to, to, to enter their home. I do feel like the, the safeguards are enough to me in my, in, in my assessment here, hearing from the engineer and um council, that that would be sufficient if we can make sure that the developer can work with the neighbors to mitigate some of the disruptions, um, be, pay more attention. It sounds like maybe mo- more goodwill needs to be so, so worked through, maybe with engineers' help um, to find a ways to just, you know, reduce the, the annoyances and um and then have a definitive date for completion, um, maybe, you know, lot three and then lot two. Kind of uh milestones that we can, we can, you know, pinpoint.
And if we had that date, that there would be some kind of a penalty if they didn't make it.
Sure.
Like, oh gee, we're sorry.
Yeah, we, we'd make that into the tripartite somehow, but I, I do feel like the seventy-five K and the two lots are, are really pretty hefty um fines to, to, to wheel.
No, not really.
Well, hold on a sec, we're, we're going through the board now. Um, let's go next to, are you, Chang, are, are you, have you stated your piece? Excellent. Um, Carrie, would you like to?
Yes, uh, first, if you do reach out to the neighbors, the gentleman I was um speaking on behalf of was Anthony Pronski, P R O N S K I. And his address is fifty-nine Loring Ave. Sorry for not having that on hand before. Um, I, I um obviously don't like the idea that a, a pending Winchester resident is stuck in limbo with his children. Um, but we really can't leave this indefinitely. We ha- we had assurances that were supposed to be delivered on a year and a half ago. Um, I think if we have a firm timeline and sort of the courage to enforce what we have in writing um, as a board, I think we could. I s- I see the value of moving the, the folks into the house, but we can't let this go past the November deadline that they've set. And so if we, if we agree to this, we have to be willing to sort of take all of the action that's uh, that's allowed to us in this agreement, if it's not met in a timely manner. So I think that's probably the question we need to answer.
Okay, um, from you Sally and then uh town council has his hand up and we'll get to you, Sally, anyone?
Yes, so what I would say is that I agree that it's with Echung and, and Carrie that it's unfortunate that the buyer of this house can't move in until um, the road is completed and the road won't be completed until the other two houses are built. Um, and that I appreciate that the builder says that they promise that they will build and make ready for occupancy by November twenty-fourth of this year, or whatever the day was. Um, that it will all be ready and done, the road will be done, the trees will be in, the paving and the sidewalks and the grass and the whole thing. It looks beautiful. Looks like it's always been that way and they're gonna do that by November. But if they don't and we let the guy buy and move into the house and the thing stays a mess for another two or three years, we have another subdivision in Winchester that kind of looks like heck. And so I can think of two right off the top of my head that are already out there. Um, so I just.
Not to.
It's all on Jay, in my mind, it's all on Jay.
Yeah, I, I think, I wanna draw your attention to the property on Skilling's in Maine that's been sitting there vacant with chain link fence around it.
That's not a subdivision, that's not a subdivision.
Right, but it's, it's, it's not getting done and.
That has nothing to do with this.
No, it does. It's, it's the same applicant.
It's, it's Skilling's in Maine, uh, so that's, that's.
The Margaret Mahoney property.
Right, so that has a, that's a, that has its own storied history. Um, Jay Tellerman, would you like to comment on something?
So, couple things, one, a comment um from Nick and one um to kinda support what Sally was just saying. One, that the seventy-five thousand dollars is not to, should not be viewed as a fine. What it, the, the number you put in the tripartite and you'd get help from Brian and, and the rest of the engineering crew is the amount of work, the amount of money would take for you to do the work if they blow the deadline or walk away. Plus, a reasonable contingency given prevailing wage and passage of time. The issue that Sally raised is probably the most important issue here. Cause if we are treating the release of a lot under the covenant-like provisions of the tripartite agreement, you really wouldn't want to do that until the secure, until the, the infrastructure that serves at least that lot is done to serve that lot. Now, that kind of thinking generally relates to longer roadways where people are doing it in phases and sometimes you see that. But Sally's concern is a legitimate one here. And that is that if you release a lot before the essential infrastructure, I'm not talking about maybe a finished coat or, you know, some uh, uh, like to-do list items, some minor landscaping things, things like that, that's fine. We could take care of that with the financial piece, but essential infrastructure, good quality road utilities, things like that have to be in, my view generally, before, if you ask me as council, are you comfortable releasing this? I would generally say not super comfortable because that seems like something where ultimately we as a town get um, get stuck holding a bag.
Yep, yep. And that's why I asked engineering if there was, if they knew enough about project construction to divide the list into those things that absolutely positively have to be done before that house gets sold to the buyer and the things that we can stand to have delayed until November twenty-third. And that is in concern for the neighbors. It's also in c- concern for stormwater drainage because there's no curbs on the construction sites right now. And so all that water is just gonna run into that land and it, it's just not managed. And so it's a raw space and I am agreeing with Carrie and Echung and Nick, that that's not the way that we wanna have the project proceed.
So, um, so we, we come to, I mean, I, 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 you know, I didn't say my piece, but I share, I share the concerns for the um, the wannabe homeowner, I can share the concerns on the town side. I should note that as my reading of the original tripartite agreement, um, if the developer on, on, on point number five, in the event the developer shall default on the performance guaranteed, um, essentially, it's up to the bank to complete the work or to the town to complete the work. But that is, I don't think either is going to happen. So, I don't know that we actually have a lot of guarantee, uh, we don't have a lot of, you know, if the developer decides to walk away, um, we're just kind of left with some undeveloped lots and a lot of work to be done. So I'm not too pleased with that. So I don't know how we tighten that up, but I, you know. I would like to see some specific milestones. I would like to say, for instance, we're gonna have lot number two completed by, you know, July, we're gonna have lot number three completed by um, the end of September or mid-October. And that allows the time for all of the um, other things on this shortlist of ten items to be finished by November twenty-fourth. But then we also want to make sure that the, the, as, as um Jay Tellerman pointed out and Sally, that we want to have the prime the major utilities and all those hooked up. So I, you know, I think we need to, if, if we were to go ahead and um, agree with this um, release, I think we have to have some significant milestones and some significant means of ensuring that those milestones are met. Um, because otherwise, November twenty-third will, will roll around. And if we don't have the completion of the lots, we really don't have a lot of leverage at that point. So.
And if, the point was made that we would need a way to check that, keep an eye on it over this passage of the months. And is that something that would fall to the town planner or the town engineer or a member of the building department? Who in town checks on compliance with these time certain agreements like this? Especially if we put milestones in. Who's, where's the beef?
Could there be an occupancy permit, say filed on, you know, July twenty-third?
Well, I, we could, you know, I think one of the concerns that certainly the this family who would like to move in would, would hope that the occupancy permit.
No, I mean, the, the next, the next lot completion, so say.
Oh, I see.
Lot three is at July twenty-third.
But that's, that's a milestone you're suggesting.
Right.
That's a, okay.
Yes, then that, that then goes through all the paperwork and, and all the, all the departments that need to go through in order for it to be okay.
The, the statute has the procedure which we'd capture in the tripartite agreement, the covenant components of it anyway. Whereas if someone wants either a release of lot or a release of financial security, they, they petition you with the information you need, which you would then probably give to, at the same time to engineering. And you make an assessment at that. It's already baked into chapter forty-one, section eighty-one U, how this process works. I agree, you should set milestones, that's helpful. But ultimately, the arbiter of this is going to be you pursuant to a process that's already in the statute.
Right.
That we can repeat in the, in the tripartite agreement. And that would probably get the engineering review that, that you need from either your department or a third-party engineer. So, that's already existing in law and that I would recite in my um, review of the uh, tripartite agreement.
But Jay, Jay, doesn't that kind of, isn't that contingent on the developer coming forward and asking for a release?
Correct, but, so, but it, we, we're building in deadlines here that get, that can result in possible other action by the board along the meat way of section eighty-one W, which talks about, you know, bringing someone in for revocation or rescission. Obviously, those are very strong remedies. We try not to do things like that where we don't have to. Completion of the subdivision, there's a number of ways to enforce it. We have these security instruments, but you also have the right to enforce your underlying subdivision decision through equitable means.
Okay, um, I see, Mr. Tarby, you have your hand raised. Did you wanna comment on something?
Yeah, there was a, a comment made earlier about utilities to this lot. The water and sewer are, are connected to the lot. There's been a certification as of the stormwater um, by Mr. Machianda. And the, though it's paved up to the lot, Loring Court that's existing is pavement up to the lot. So I did, I just didn't understand that, that comment.
About the missing curbs? Is it, that was, you, there is the comment you didn't understand?
I didn't hear you.
I said, is it the, the fact that, that I stated that there are no curbs on the to-be-developed lots right now? Um, which means that you have um, subbase tarmac, blacktop, whatever, just going to construction site dirt. And, um, which is um, a, a easily degraded condition in, in heavy rain, which is something we get a lot of these days. That's why I was asking.
So, um, it's a, to move, um, as Echung pointed out about twenty minutes ago, we're about forty minutes over on this. So, um, I would, I would, I would like us to move to a decision at the moment and that would be um, so one, one way of moving forward would be to have a motion to um, reject this um, request. Another motion would be a motion to accept it with conditions. And the conditions could be, for instance, that the town council looks at, comes up with um, whatever language um, that he feels will secure the town's best interests and that we incorporate certain milestones, some performance guarantees. And we set a um, a specific end time for this process. Um, so that would be, and, and one of the, I'm, I don't know that we have time for all of those details, so I think that um, we could at least start the, we could move forward.
What we need to do is continue the public hearing to another date, which we can figure out. And in the interim, that we would ask Jay to come up with a tripartite agreement that is, I don't know, an update or a replacement to the one that's here now, but it just um makes sure that milestones are met, that any work to improve the road that can be done now should be done now. Um, and that all the work will all be done. The house is built and the road improved and the trees and the grass and drainage and the whole thing by November twenty-third.
So that would be that motion.
So that, that, that's an ex- um, acceptance with conditions kind of a motion, is that right?
It would be an acceptance with conditions.
I, I don't even know if we have the votes to do that, but um, I mean, I would second that.
Well, some has. I don't think anyone has actually made a motion yet.
I can make a motion to reject.
Is it a motion to, to see the conditions before we accept it? That sort of sounds more like.
Well, we, Nick, Nick, Nick. Wait, Nick just made a motion to reject. So he actually said the magic words, I make a motion. So, um, do we have a second for that motion?
I, I can't think that a step past the rejection. If we reject it, what happens to the site?
There's incentive to get it completed.
Well, the.
Expired agreement with them.
So there's a, you know, um, I don't know how long it will, you know, I ass, you know, we could. So, Mr. Tarby.
I think that's, I think that's a whole, I think we'd be carving a whole other path. I think we have to.
Well, we're at the moment where before we can, I mean, by Rogers rules.
Expired about the current apartheid, tripartite.
Wait, wait, hold on, hold on one sec. We still need to have, we either have a second for the motion or the motion dies. But technically, we can't discuss the motion until we have a second.
It's, it's paragraph five.
So, I am not seeing a second for that motion, Nick, so.
Okay.
I think that motion does not make it to the next stage. Um, do we have another motion?
Sally, did you wanna make that motion or?
Let me, let me say it again. I move that the planning board continue this public hearing to another date, a date that we will figure out before the end of this conversation. Um, and that in the interim, so therefore it's enough time for Jay to um, I think, put together a whole new tripartite agreement and for us to give to him the milestones that we would like. And Echung sounded like she had a good start on what those might be. Um, and that we be specific about this list of items that is work that remains to be done on the, the road. Um, and those get included in that agreement. Um, and um, I still ask, it would be nice to know who wrote this and who's it from?
Um, Sally, could I ask that you put, it, it sounds like your motion is a motion to approve with conditions?
I think it is, but, but I wanna.
Could you, could you please, can you please say that?
No, it's not a motion to approve with conditions. It's a motion to approve when we see a revised apartheid agreement, tripartite.
Maybe we don't need a motion, maybe we just need to continue then.
So is it a motion to continue, continue the public hearing?
Well, my, my concern is that if we're gonna ask town council to do all of this work and then in a week or so, we say, no, we really don't like it. I think that's, that's, if, if.
Oh, right.
I really think that the board needs to make a decision as to whether they wanna move forward and then.
Okay, then I make a motion, oh, I'm sorry.
I withdraw my motion. I withdraw. I withdraw my motion. I withdraw whatever pathetic motion I attempted to.
I thought it was a great motion, Sally. I was very ready. Hop on board. Don't, don't down.
Anything I want to hear.
Oh, man. Also, I make a motion to approve with conditions, um, conditions TBD. Maybe is is that sufficient to get it going so that we can discuss it if I get a second?
I think that we would approve it with um the condition. Let's write some conditions. The condition is that.
There is a definitive date for completion.
And completion means three houses and a finished street. Three houses.
Occupy execution of the agreement as it's.
Definitive date to complete subdivision including construction of homes on lots two and three.
It to the point of being uh occupiable, like they could get it CO.
I I would be careful about writing it too. I think we should just say execute the agreement because I'm worried we'll drop pieces that will then just be okay to be dropped.
Okay, so.
So there, let me, can I just make a quick suggestion, though?
Yes.
I I think that the issue you need to be concerned about is the infrastructure. We generally don't get involved in the homes as much. You can put an end date like a on when you you want the subdivision completed. But generally, what we concern ourselves with is from the municipal side is the completion of all the infrastructure.
Right.
So what you need to get an assurance of in these documents is the completion of all the infrastructure from whatever milestones you want that can support homes. If if they choose, like from a market perspective, to hold off on building a home, fine. But that the the infrastructure has to be re home ready. Is I think we should be focused on.
Jay, that we could extend that to say it should be home ready for the people who are already living on that street. Which means that the street should be done now to the finished spec.
But I I I I I leave it to you what what, when you want the specs done and what you want done. I just, the 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 thing we're going to focus on in this documentation is infrastructure.
Right.
If there are new homes on undeveloped lots, that that could be more of a market driven thing. But you don't want a construction zone with respect to the infrastructure. So that needs to get done.
When I say finished, I mean, it's water, sewer, electrical communications, drainage, um, curbs, top paving, gravel.
So, so Jay, um, you know, the reason we're here is that the the tripartite agreement does um, actually, it's much broader than that in that it talks about all of the work, including the construction of the homes. So this would I'm trying to understand how the assurance of infrastructure completion works with that. Is that?
It well, it doesn't. It all I'm saying, it's very unusual for us to dictate when you actually build a house on a lot.
Right, we they made it part of the condition. We.
It's it's much more usual for us to manage the completion of the infrastructure to support the lots.
Right. So I thi- I think we have, you know, so I'm trying to, you know, we we have a statement from Mr. Tarby, Mr. Murray, that they intend on completing construction of the lots by November twenty fourth, I believe it was. So at least we have a verbal agreement from them. So we can, so that could be part of our conditions as they said that that's possible. But we would have assurance of completion of infrastructure. We would have um completion of a tripartite agreement. And we would leave that up to town council and council for the developer. Um, because there's give and take on that. We would have the um town council to review the HOA to make sure that it protects the interests of the town. Um, we would set um milestones. So for instance, I think um each thing you mentioned, a certificate of occupancy.
Well, I I yeah, I don't know. Um, Mr. Talman said there it's baked in somehow.
Well, if we put the miles.
Okay, yeah, we could do it, you know, half, half completion of of the lots or or like half, whatever it is, whatever it is. That's that's fine. If it's come, uh, if it's a certificate of um occupancy, I just threw that out. I don't want it to be in stone.
I think that is an official document which indicates that it is livable, that all of the utilities are connected and that someone could actually move in. So my understanding is that they're looking for a a certificate of occupancy for lot one currently because they believe it's already in move in state. So um.
And that that's in the context of the road being um degraded. And and their intention to improve the road as part of the project. Um, and so I'm saying what aspects of this road can be done now in in as as part of this agreement that they would, we would release this one lot and are are moving the the date for the rest of the development off the houses anyway, off to November.
So can we put it into the condition that town engineer the the engineering department will look into, thank, sorry to put work on you, Brian. I I realize that this is um, but we don't, I don't think we have the knowledge or expertise this evening to come to a specific condition like that. But we can um have a condition that the town engineer look at what um immediate or near term remediations there are to the road.
Yes. And then there was other things to having to do with the impact on the neighborhood and whether there was any mitigating strategies that could be put in place between now and when the work finally is completed in November. Noise, dust, um, the dirt coming off the tires onto.
Yeah, I wonder how, if we could ask that the developer somehow work with the the neighbors and some kind of public will, public relations.
Okay, so that's certainly, um, we can ask developer to implement noise and dust mitigation.
And tracking from the site. Tracking dirt from this, tracking of dirt from the site. There's methods in construction zones for.
Tracking of dirt off of site off of site in cooperation with neighbors. Okay, so we have a number of these conditions. I think we're getting close to the end of our conditions. Um, the milestones, which I think we're going to have to come up with, I think what we're going to have to do is move forward with this. Um, have another hearing where the conditions are brought to us for our review and approval. Um, and then we can move forward with that. So the conditions would be some form of certificate of occupancy. Then they would also be um finishing of roadwork.
To the satisfaction of the engineering department and the planning board.
I'm sorry?
I was saying, wording could be to the satisfaction of the engineering department and the planning board.
Yeah, well, this would all be to the satisfaction of the planning board and we would use, so all of this.
Engineering's partners in.
That's, yeah, but we 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 were going to do that. So it's it's our final say. So I think, I think all of this will be to the satisfaction of the planning board because we're going to be approving this. So I think um, so that is the motion. And Nancy, I apologize for what you have to go through to write that down. Um, is there? Um, so I don't recall if there was a second.
I do not believe that there was a second.
Okay, E Ching, you made the, you made the motion. So the motion um.
Approve with conditions.
Is approved with conditions. The conditions are um definitive date to um comply with the subdivision agreement. Um, assurance of completion of infrastructure work.
By the.
I'm sorry?
By the date.
By some, by a date. Um, completion, this is a revision of the tripartite agreement by town council. Um, review of the HOA to ensure that the town's um, concerns are met. Um, milestones, including certificates of occupancy and a finishing of the roadwork. Consultation of the town engineer to determine what immediate or near term remediations are possible. And as well with the developer and for the developer to implement a noise and dust mitigation and tracking of dust off of the site in cooperation with neighbors. Is there anything else that we want to add to this list?
Be in cooperation with the neighbors. They're not making the noise.
Oh, no, no, no. They just have to talk about it. We we need to move on, you guys.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, and and okay, in consultation. Okay, so we have a second on that?
I seconded.
Um, okay, let's do a roll call vote. I assume we don't need more discussion. Um, Carrie?
I reluctantly vote I.
Um, E Ching?
I.
Nick?
Nay.
Uh, Sally?
I.
And I vote I as well. Um, I think we have um.
Beat it.
We've exhausted that one, I believe. Um, so.
We're gonna, so we're gonna wait for Jay to write.
Oh, sure. We do have to, we have to, we have to continue this hearing.
Right, we we're gonna wait for Jay to write some papers and we're gonna give him a deadline and we're gonna set a meeting date. So.
So I move that we continue this hearing. Um, do we have to do it before the new um new planning board comes?
We do not, but we do have to set a time.
We have way too much, I think, on our.
I know, I was gonna say, can we continue it until after town meeting in May?
I think that would be, um, you know, so let's, if, one of the reasons I think that we're we're voting yes on this is to hopefully provide relief for this person who wants to move in and out of temporary housing.
Right.
If we wait until May to do that, they will be in temporary housing for another three months.
I think certainly we can't do it next week. Um, I mean, we might be able to do, we might, if if Jay can finish um some of the things in two weeks or three weeks, I mean, we that would be fine. We just need to get our amendments.
So that would be by Tuesday, the twenty sixth of March?
Yeah. Is that a meeting time, Taylor?
What, we can certainly make that. I will be out of town, but I I will certainly be able to be doing it remotely.
I I move that we move, we continue the public hearing to March twenty six.
Um, at at seven thirty, at seven thirty.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please. E Ching?
I.
Sally?
I.
Carrie?
I.
Nick?
Hi.
And I say I as well. Thank you. Okay, um, where are we now? I have lost my agenda.
We are at um petition for nine eighty seven, nine eighty nine Main Street.
Okay.
Asked to provide a recommendation to the ZBA.
Okay, so.
Yeah, can I suggest that we do the flood mitigation plan first?
Yes, let's do that first, um, because that's, that's really important to get that through. So who do we have here to present it? And I apologize for um the delay. I see we have Meg White from the town here and Jake San Antonio. And why don't Jake, do you wanna, are you gonna be presenting?
Yes, I'm I'm gonna be presenting.
And we would appreciate a very succinct, concise presentation.
Sure. Um, I do have a few slides or I can just do it verbal. So uh, what would you prefer?
Uh, why don't you throw up the slides and go quick?
Okay. All right, can you see my slides?
Yep.
My, okay, so I'm here to present on the town of Winchester's um Abidona River Flood Mitigation Program. And this is project ten um called Morocco School Culverts. The place us, um, these are proposed culverts to supplement existing culverts under the MBTA rail line behind the Morocco school. Um, the photo on the right side is showing the Abidona River. Um, up on the northern part, you can see Cross Street. On the bottom right is Tuff's Road going into Morocco School. And the project site is really right behind Morocco School. And you can access it from both the Morocco School and from the transfer station. Um, you know, this flood mitigation program was started after the devastating floods of ninety six, ninety eight, two thousand and one, which resulted in uh millions of dollars of damage back then. Um, the town developed a flood mitigation program totaling seventeen projects. It moved through MIPA, the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act in two thousand and ten. And since then, the town has been moving essentially downstream to upstream, completing uh flood mitigation projects being river widening, uh, bridge replacements. Um, and this is the last project of the the program. And it's to add two eight foot diameter culverts under the rail line. The project itself has some significant benefits, um, upstream of that constriction at the railroad tracks. Um, adding these two additional culverts will reduce the one hundred year flood elevation by over three feet. It will remove um forty three buildings and homes from the flood plain, including the Morocco School. And will benefit twenty nine other homes. Um, the two A for culverts um will be supplementing two four by seven culverts. Um, they're going to be installed with keeping the rail lines live, so there'll be pipe jacked underneath.
Hmm.
Um, here's a site plan, um, essentially in the center is the two four by seven culverts. It's going to be flanked on each side by these two new proposed culverts. There's going to be some um minor regrading of the riverbanks and dredging. And that's why we're in front of you is because we're applying for a chapter ninety one waterways license and permit. The permit is for the dredging and the license is for the two new proposed structures in the public waterway. Um, and as part of the chapter ninety one regulations, we're required to submit the plans um, and waterways application to the planning board and get a sign off that you guys were the plans were submitted to you. Um, the plans were submitted um via public notice back in December to the planning board. Um, where you've got copies of the plan and a link to download the full waterways application. Um, here's just a couple of second views during the two existing four by seven box culverts. You know, being flanked by the two eight foot diameter culverts. Access is going to be, as I said, through the Morocco School and from the transfer station for the construction. And what I'm asking for tonight is to get the planning board to sign um this form acknowledging that the plans were submitted to the planning board.
Just quickly, yeah, what's a culvert?
A culvert is uh essentially a large pipe that is underneath like a a raised um road or in this case, a railroad to convey uh the river water.
So so this um enhances the river flow?
It does. Right now, those four by seven culverts constrict the flow during uh
Okay.
major flood events. And this is going to increase the conveyance to uh to allow.
And 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 since they're um, uh, since they allow water through, they shouldn't impact fish.
No, it'll actually, um, lower velocities improve fish passage at this location.
Okay. Is there any, are there any downsides to this? And can we uh, can we vote to approve uh quickly?
There is no downsides. We've got all our permits. This went in front of the Conservation Commission and we've already gotten approval from them. And you know, the last permit before we can put this out to bid is this chapter ninety one license. And all we really need is acknowledgement that the plans and application were submitted to you.
I move to. I think it's great. It's exciting to get this finished.
Yeah, I don't think we actually have to move or we just, we have been presented with the plans. We've acknowledged, all they have to do is is we just have to acknowledge that we have been, the plans have been submitted.
We are seen and we are excited. Carry on.
So I will, I will sign the papers tomorrow morning because you have, we have. So I will, I will sign the papers tomorrow morning, because you have, we have, we have done all the technical work of submitting the plans to us, so.
Terrific. I really appreciate your time.
Okay.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, so now let us go to, um. Look, so we are, um, we're way over our commit, our allotment here, so we have a ZBA petition and we have a, um, three A, um, discussion we have to have. Um, can we, does the board think we can get through the ZBA position quickly?
I think we can.
So why don't we do this quickly then? Uh, Taylor, you want to lead us off on this?
Uh, I will summarize as much as, as I can here, just to move through it. So this is a petition for oh-oh-nine, uh, nine eighty-seven to nine eighty-nine Main Street. Uh, this property is located in GBD three. Uh, in twenty eighteen, um, the historical commission deemed that it was not a historical asset. Um, and, um, it's allowing, uh, allowing demolition. This is a two-family home that will be, uh, torn down and then a new two-family home will be replaced on the existing, um. The existing footprint. Uh, what is currently non-conforming is the, uh, side setback, uh, in the rear setback, as well as the open space and area, which, uh, should be noted, um, are all improving towards their more open space, more green space, and less hardscape. Uh, however, they are still underneath their, their, their requires, so. Um.
Taylor, on your cover memo, it says non-conforming, yes. Does that mean that they are conforming?
Existing non-conforming.
Oh, they're existing non-conforming. Okay, now I get it. Thank you, sorry.
Um. So. Before I move for, be, be, before we move forward, I'd like to, um, have actually, not included in here is emailed earlier, Brian Manter, are you able? Uh, Brian, are you here?
Yes.
Were you able to speak to, um, your, your review and speak about the curb cut, please?
Yeah.
Uh, no, metal, um, yes, I can. So I'll do a quick, so, um, as shown on the proposed plan, the, uh, existing curb cut, um, granite, yep, that's perfect, Taylor, thank you. Um, so as proposed, the, the existing granite curbing does not uh, extend all the way to the limits of the proposed ten-foot-wide curb cut. So it'd be the engineering department's recommendation that the curbing be extended as kind of sh- shown in the schematic I read, um, from, uh, the existing to the proposed limits of the width of the curb, proposed curb. The other one, the other item that we'd had was requesting is that the applicant provide a turning radius for the proposed parking lot, that's a parking space that's in front of the proposed building and parallel to their building and the roadway. Um, to make sure that the, uh, that the applicant can adequately access that parking spot.
Okay, um, any discussion from the board?
So I, I can start. Um, the setbacks, um, east and rear setbacks, um, that are non-conforming are the existing concrete block garage that's gonna remain as is. Um, and then, as Taylor said, all the, all the sort of necessary requirements, the open area, green space, hardscape, have improved, even though they are non-conforming right now, the proposed, um, development will actually improve those ish, those, those aspects. Um, from my look at the elevations and, um, and it's, it's a, it's a great investment into that property, I think, and it will prove that the windows are lovely, the, the design is lovely. I think, you know, if we can, as we've been focusing on Main Street, um, continue to, uh, um, encourage investment, um, on these properties, and this seems like a very proper, um, kind of improvement in surrounding, um, some of the more, uh, residential quiet or lots behind. I think, I think this is, this is great, and I would, um, I would move to, um, recommend favorable action.
Would you like, I believe, James is their petitioner, would you like to hear from him?
Uh, the board seems to say yes. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Dunleavy.
Uh, good evening, um, planning board, um. So my wife and I own this house for the last thirty years. The reason for redeveloping it is it's tired, the basement is leaking. And I'm in the building business in town for over forty years. Um, I looked at remodeling this. And frankly, it's not conducive to a remodel, given the fact that the foundation is leaking. It's a cinder block foundation. One comment I have on the engineering, when they, they, I got that notice today where they showed a curb. I'm okay with the curb and I was having a ten-foot driveway, but right up my neighbor, that's their front egress for that house next door on the left. So that's their egress. If you notice, they have a gate there. They don't use it per se. But that's, you may want to look into that. I don't think you can put a curb there because that's the neighbor's way in and out. Um, I understand about bring, extending the curb on the right side, that's fine. Uh, but I just note that on the left, on that curb on the left.
So Taylor, it's very illustrative to look at street view. Um, so Mr. Dunleavy, are you saying that the grassy area that's to the left of your driveway is their land and that's where they park?
That, that's their land. They, they don't use that house on the neck. It's a historic house on the left. They don't use that. They put the gate step back, I think, for aesthetics. But that is their grassy area. In fact, underneath that grass is, is kind of, um, for stone. The grass is grown through it. And they don't use it as a driveway, but that's their only, that's the neighbor's own, that, that's a two-family on the left. They have an apartment at the rear and they park at the rear. They, but if they were technically back in the day when we first bought this house, cars used to go in on Main Street and go all the way to Russell behind on that neighbor's property. But one of the owners over the last fifteen years put up a fence, but that gate stepped back, so that technically if they wanted to, they could park there. That's their egress.
I see, okay. So what is the burden on them if they need to put the, they would have to come to us and approve, we would have to approve a curb cut. They, do they already have a curb?
Well, they have a curb cut. There is a car, if you look where, where the engineer drew that red mark on the left side, there is no curbing there.
Right.
So they can drive as a slope.
A curb here, if you put a curb here, they would have to come back to get the curb cut approved if they wanted to restore the road you're describing.
Absolutely, and I don't think, I, I, I mean, I, I'm not familiar with the, with the rule, but I'm not so sure that I can actually put a curb cut in front of their property.
Did they, but I'm, I'm.
Not a curb cut, not a curb cut. I don't think I can put a curb.
You've, you've thoughtfully brought their issues to us. I'm wondering sort of like if we sort of think this through, did, is there another plate? Where do they park their cars? You said on the other side of the property?
They currently park their cars on the rear. They use their rear entrance to the house.
Gotcha, okay.
Uh, and they, they currently park on Russell.
Yeah, the back of the house is on Russell and they can park in the driveway that's on Russell.
Yeah, but their, but their driveway, they have, uh, you may be able to check it out on maps, but
Yeah.
their driveway from, for that house, it spills out onto Main Street, right, where that grassy patches.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for bringing that to us. Um, can we make, can we revise the motion to be pending approval from the neighbor to make this, is that?
What, but then, but they, they haven't come with a proposal to us, so I.
Yeah, so that's just, that's such a suggestion from engineering that they're going to make to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
So, um.
Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of this, um, replacing this older house that's in terrible condition with a new house. And, and I mean, in principle, that's a great idea. And, and I, I think that the fact that there's ambiguity about a curb cut on a budding property, um, should not necessarily hold this up.
Well, I don't really think it's a curb cut, because there's no, there's no curb, so technically, they could drive a car in through those gates tomorrow, if they want to do, and that's that, that's probably their right, and I don't think we can uh, we're right at where the red line is. That's our property line right there.
Yeah.
Um, it looks better actually to have that grass there, and when we, when we do our thing, it will look even better because all of a sudden you have more lawn on Main Street.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and, and my question for Brian too is that this is a two-family, so the, the ten-foot limit isn't restricted to two families. I think it's, it's a little bit wider, correct? So I would, you know, question whether or not to actually, um, decrease that curb cut. Especially if you are suggesting that they make a sort of a, uh, you know, a curb, sort of roundabout into the drive in front of the house.
Yeah, it looks really tight.
Yeah.
Well, but don't, don't forget, there's already going to be a new curb cut, right, sort of the other, for the new park, for the new garage.
Yes.
So you're gonna get to the twenty feet right there, because you've got two.
Yeah, you have two tens.
You have two tens, so there's, there's, you've hit the limit.
I got it.
Um, the only, I, I just, I think, I think we're coming close to an agreement. And one of the things I just wanted to note is I'm, I'm wondering if you truly need that extra parking space in front, just because you now have, um, the old, the old setup has asphalt essentially from the, this, from the sidewalk all the way up to the front of the house. And I know you have a little bit of planting there, but I'm wondering if that sparking space, um, right in front is actually needed. Um, because you've got a driveway, you've got an underground park, you've got a, a parking slot underneath the house now, and you've got all that parking on the left. So that's my only comment.
If it's a two-family, so the garage on the right side, the garage under has parking in the garage and it has one parking space in front of the garage door. So that's two parking spaces for one unit. The house on the left has its tandem. Because the driveway is, you know, it's only about ten feet as there to the left of the steps and between that and the fence. So that's tandem parking. The reason for that, um, and you wouldn't certainly do it with a Cadillac, but with a, with these smaller cars, um, the reason for that front is almost like to give relief to the tandem parking.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, technically, they're both tandem, right? Because you've got, there's only a one-car garage.
That's true, that, that, that's valid, yeah, that's true. In front of the garage, it's technically tandem as well. So that was the reason for that driveway there, that little shark.
Yeah, I just, my only comment is, is Main Street, that, that part of Main Street is in sore need of green. And so if you were to be able to, you know, consider getting rid of that parking spot and putting more green there, maybe a nice tree, um, that would certainly make me happy. But that's my only comment. Any other comments from the rest of the board, or can we, can we, did we have a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion, I believe, to
Okay.
to, uh, um, recommend favorable action.
Okay, do we have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, further discussion, or can we move to a vote?
I would like to, um, further the discussion by in, um, supporting your comment that the parking space be taken out of the front yard. Um, and I see that there's a little bit of space at the end of the bituminous concrete driveway in the back of the house, and maybe that can be the overflow parking for the property, but Diab is right that this part of Main Street will benefit from more green, and it will make the house look so much nicer to have grass in the front.
So is that an amendment to this?
That's what it would be, I think, yes.
So the, the, the motion, the motion to amend to recommend that the, um, the front parking space be replaced with, with green space.
Yes.
Is there a second for that amendment?
I'll second it with enthusiasm for all this green space on Main Street.
Okay, so, uh, let's vote on the motion to amend. Um, Nick?
Uh, to amend, um, I.
Uh, Carrie?
I.
Eeching?
I.
Sally?
I.
And I say I as well. Um, okay, so now we're back to the main now amended motion. Is there, uh, further discussion, or can we move to a vote? Okay, uh, let's move to a vote. Eeching?
I.
Nick?
I'm gonna say nay on a kind of the front-facing garage and the lack, uh, too much hardscape, uh, un- understanding that, uh, there'll be four, uh, yes votes.
Okay, um, Carrie?
I.
Sally?
I.
And I say I as well. So there you go, Mr. Dunleavy. Um, good luck at the ZBA. We wish you well.
Good evening.
Have a great evening. Sorry about the wait. Um, so now we are moving on to, uh, our final agenda item, which is MBTA three A and North Main Street rezoning. Taylor, you want to kick this off?
Uh, yes. Um. Thank you, everyone, for putting all the, um, all your work into the revisions to the to everything so far. Um, I have notified most of you that it's gonna be my recommendation at this point to uh, to postpone our North Main Street amendment to the, to fall town meeting. And to focus a hundred percent of our efforts in the last week and a half on MBTA three A. It's my opinion that that's the more important of the two. Uh, specifically since it's the more sensitive one, I think that we can certainly bring North Main to, to spring town meeting, and I, I feel confident that we can bring a good one. I just believe that we can bring an even better one to fall. Um.
So I, I like that idea.
That's my recommendation.
Uh, I like the idea because we can do a better job if we have more time, and the one that's time-sensitive is the three A, that's the one that we are, that we need to rush because of other reasons, so we, we need to, we need to have an, another chance if we fail this time. But we don't have to do that for the three A. We can, we can take our time to do a, 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 a bang-up job on it.
Um, any other comments from the board?
I, I think it's, I, I think it's feeling pretty overwhelming to get it done well, and I think we have new headwinds from what's happening in Milton, and we have to be really focused on making sure that we're communicating clearly what we, what work we've put in here, the importance of three A and how it will grow the town. I'm glad that we've worked on it in conjunction with North Main until now, um, but I, I, I feel like we're not able to dive enough into putting nuance into each of the, each of the sub-districts that we're creating, and I think that's a big missed opportunity, and I think if we have more time to flesh those out, we can come up with a stronger plan for North Main. So I know there are consultant issues that we need to think about, but, um, I personally think it's a great idea, Taylor.
Um, Sally?
I think it's a good idea, um, uh, because I agree that there is, um, more fine-tuning and, and developing of nuanced quality, um, than, than we have time for between now and the deadline of the warrant and even town meeting. Um, so the, the big thing for me would be to emphasize to our community and to, um, the fin- finance committee that we have, um, every need for ongoing funding for this project, because it is a critical deliverable in the, um, master plan. And we have done so much work, we're so close. The time that we have between, you know, between the end of town meeting and the fall will be put to excellent use to really, really come up with a set of zoning, um, of, of, a zoning bylaw for this mixed-use district that will really meet the town's needs. Um, so that's why I'm in favor of it.
Um, Eeching?
Um, a clarification here, um, just for Main Street to pass it, we need, uh, majority. Is that correct? Not two-thirds?
I think, um, Taylor, do you know how that falls?
I believe it's majority.
I had a conversation about that with Emily, and she said that if, you're talking about W one and E one.
No, I'm talking about the base zoning for uh, MU one.
MU one.
Use one.
Oh, and so, oh, yes.
For Main Street.
Because it's housing. What she said was. Because it's housing. What she said was having to do with three A. But she said with regards to three A, that if we include mixed use as of right, um, or require miss mixed use, Diab, I think that's correct. That, um, it becomes not a simple majority vote. It becomes a other, what super majority, what do you call it?
It's super, but, but again, we need to be care- careful about, so three A is going to be multifamily by right. And so that is simple majority. The question is, are the housing components in the MU one district, which is, as Yi Ching pointed out, the underlying district, is that, is that housing component sufficient to get us to a simple majority?
I think if we include the inclusionary, um, eh, eh, housing parts of it, because it is affordable housing there, then it becomes majority.
Yes.
So, so let us, so this is a question that I wish we had, um, town council still with us this evening. But why don't we, why don't we ask town council to weigh in on that question? So does the answer to that question change your?
Um, a little bit, but I think just in calculations of how, how difficult it might be to, to do both at the same time. I think, um, with these zoning changes, I, I think that Taylor, um, we uh, like pattern back on backs, but I think that we've done a pretty good job about communicating what's coming through. Um, at D I B F, you've talked about it at town meeting for six town meetings straight now, I feel like. Um, and so for those who don't, for zoning issues, I think it's very difficult for people who don't listen to it, to ever listen to it. So I think, I think we've done sort of as best as we could to sort of, you know, market it. And so i- it's, it's gonna be confusing for a lot of people, no matter what. Um, I think that our success at town meeting will very much depend on our presentation. I think it's gonna be very, it has to be very clear, very, very, um, not simple in some ways, but very, um, targeted.
Understandable.
Understandable. I, eh, eh, all of those things, like that has to just be so good. And I, I, I feel okay about MBTA three A right now. And then for Main Street, however, I think that there, there are aspects of it that we can highlight. Such as, you know, hey, we've been thinking about this for decades, um, of this quarter as something that is a great opportunity and this dovetails with MBTA three A. And in some ways, um, makes it easier for us to achieve MBTA three A in a more meaningful way. Um, and I, 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 I've talked with a lot of people, not a lot, but a couple of people um, in the community, um, about how that's been perceived. And it seems like the, the resistance to MBTA three A mostly is from the fact that it's paper compliance for the most part. Um, and not, maybe not as robust as this needs to be. That's, that's the major, that's not the Milton conversation that I, you know, that, that is, I hear. So I do wanna present it definitely, both of them at spring, so that it queues it up. Um, so for, especially for people who are a little bit frustrated by how limited our three A is, um, to, to be able to make the underlying zoning for Main Street a little bit more robust. But I do think that we need to present it at town meeting in some way to queue it up and to, 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 to kind of till the soil for the next. Because I, I think that Main Street is gonna be really robust if we can make it.
I, I think it is. And I really like what you're saying, which is to present to town meeting our progress, our robust progress. And to say finishing touches will be brought to town meeting in the fall. And this is tables of uses, it's design standards, it's dimensional standards, it's, it's, um, uh, incentives, which we still have to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so one, so procedurally, if I might say, so one thing we could do is we could present and then have a, a request for indefinite postponement. If we wanted to take that route to move it to the fall now.
Why indefinite, Diab?
Well, because it's just the way it's done. To be honest, the planning board doesn't, can always bring back its, a planning board articles to town meeting regardless of the outcome. That's, that's something the planning board has the right to do. Typically, um, well, you call it indefinite because you don't wanna say, otherwise you'd have to say, we have to bring it to this exact time and date.
Well, you would say to the, to the first session of the, of the Fall Town Meeting.
Yeah, but.
It's just safer to say indefinitely and then bring it to the.
But, but again, again, the point is.
Like if three day doesn't pass and we have to consume fall with that, then we're stuck. We also have to, it's just.
But, but again, the planning board has the right to bring any of its measures, any zoning measure to town meeting. Regardless of the vote at town meeting. So even if, if three, if our, if our North Main Street, if we took it to a vote and it failed, we would still have the ability to bring it forward in the fall. This is not the same as other, other people who bring forward articles which, or warrant articles which fail have to wait two years. The planning board has a special, um, provisions, let's call it provisions. So, um, I just wanna throw in my two cents and I, I do, I do appreciate the enormous amount of work that's gone into this. And I know, I know Taylor and, and Griffin have been working on this. And certainly the Z RAC and, uh, our consultants. So I understand the feeling of time pressure in terms of getting the best we can do on three A. Um, my only real concern is budget in that we do not have extra monies in our budget to handle, um, continued, um, work with Forman Place. We would have to take that out of our existing, our, our sort of standard consultant budget. So that's my only concern. Whatever monies we do not spend by the end of sprint, by the end of, you know, this fiscal year go away.
It's May thirty first, right? Is that our fiscal year, May thirty first?
No, I think it's June thirty first.
It's the end of June.
End of June. So we can certainly continue working with Forman Place through there with the hope that, um, we will get to ninety-five percent completion. But I, I think that we're going to still require, um, their services as we move to Fall Town Meeting. And so that's just, uh, that's my real, my only concern. So.
I think that that's the concern that you'll bring to the FinCom, um, and, um.
But we can't ask for any more money. Our budget was set. The town manager has put together a budget based on what we presented.
The money we have.
So we would, we can, we can, we can finish out our fiscal year and use up all that money. It's just that as of July first, we have to use whatever money is in our budget, which will not include the extra amount of monies for, um.
For finishing with North Main Street rezoning.
Yeah, we would be working through whatever we asked out of our standard professional, um.
And what do we have in the fiscal year ahead in terms of, of expectations for using the, that professional services money?
Well, we were, we were looking forward to, we're starting work up again on our light industrial area. And so that is, we had asked for monies for that. We got, we got the money for that last spring, but we had to put that aside. So we're gonna lose that money. Unless we ask town meeting again, but, but we don't have an article for that. So the, um, so that might be delayed, which I really don't, you know, that's, I forget how much we have in professional services. Are we at forty-five? Taylor, do you recall?
Um, I can't remember if it's forty or forty-five, but it's either forty or forty-five. And the, the, the items that we've asked for are, um, community engagement and website improvements, a small one. Then it's light, light industrial, and then it's master plan implementation. Those are the three things that we've asked for money. Now, I don't know what the exact amount is for the remainder of the year, but we have enough money to invest for the remainder of this fiscal year. In continuing with, with Forman Place. And as of today, we have about roughly a quarter of Forman Place's remaining budget, uh, to work through.
Okay.
As well.
Okay. And, and then of course, we can't forget, of course, that we now for the first time have in our budget proposal, an assistant town planner. So we will have more resources available in the planning department moving forward. So, um, so that's an important point. Uh, it won't make up for, you know, being able to hire, um, professional consultants. But it's certainly, you know, in their areas of expertise, but it certainly will help a lot. So anyway, um, I think, I think it's important that if the board wants to move North Main to the fall, we, we, we make that a formal decision.
Were you, you do that, Diab? I just, I'm, I'm just looking and, and maybe it's worth looking into it a little bit further. But I am looking at the state law. And, um, it does say that no proposed zoning ordinance or bylaw, which has been unfavorably acted upon by city council or town meeting shall be considered, um, shall be considered by the town meeting, shall not be considered by, uh, from the town meeting within two years of the date which unfavorable action was adopted.
Well, I think there's an out for the planning board though.
So this is a zoning ordinance. So who else would be?
Oh, you can, a zoning ordinance could be proposed by anyone.
Okay.
As, as a matter of fact, the rezoning of the, the, um, Lauren Court, I believe, was, was the citizens proposition.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So, so let's, let's, let's make sure of that. I, I think that, I know we, we had this, this, we had this discussion when we were talking about the ADU bylaw and whether we would have a chance to come back. So let's, let's make sure of that. But it, it, it probably doesn't matter in terms of the outcome of this discussion. Um, so I think though the.
Is it possible to send in that, um, article? And then at town meeting, just present it, but say we're indefinitely.
Yes, yes. I think we can do that. And typically town meeting has, has, um, if, if, if you decide to pull the, if you decide to go for indefinite postponement, as long as we don't sit there for twenty minutes talking about it, um, and, and get on their bad side, I think town meeting would be willing to allow us to, to move it.
And in that, and in that scenario, Yi Ching, um, the work that we have underway right now for the, the, uh, um, the MU one zoning, um, we would push through as much as we can in time for the warrant. Um, with the understanding that we're, we're, we're not gonna present it because we're aware that there might be some definitions or there might be some nuanced language or there might be some revisiting of uses or whatever that we wanna do between now and September that we wouldn't, or November that we wouldn't have a chance to do if we put it to the floor.
So workflow wise for Taylor, Diab, uh, whoever knows, um, so we have a Z RAC meeting. Actually, it's a public meeting this Thursday, right, for design review? And then a public meeting next Thursday also. We have a, do we have a Tuesday planning board meeting?
Yes.
Yes. So all those things, is it more preferable for us to push through Main Street and MBTA three A at the same time and keep going? Or is it, is it better to remove this and, and put, put the, um, Main Street on ice? And then focus on MBTA three A?
So I think that the design guidelines that we're looking at for MBTA three A would be very, I think, you know, my hope was always that the three A guidelines and the North Main Street guidelines would be so similar as to be the same, so that you would not be able to tell whether a project was built, which design guidelines were followed. So I think the work that we're doing, even on the North Main Street guidelines, still extends to three A. So I think we could continue in that with that. Um, at least that's my opinion.
The guidelines that we're using for North Main, we sent them to, um, uh, no, whatever the, whatever, whatever the organization is that helps us understand if we're compliant or not, uh, through Emily. And they came back to us and said that they would not be accepted.
The ones that we have for three A right now?
For North Main, yeah. So we cannot, they, they've said that we cannot implement North Main's design guidelines as currently written.
Did they say why or which parts?
They're too, they're, they're, they're too pers- too prescriptive.
Right. And this is specifically the underlying zoning. And if we have two, if, if we have two sections of North Main that are part, that would be part of the three A overlay, it's the three A overlay design guidelines that would be applied to projects that were brought in as by right multifamily. Eh, and so, the question is, does the three A guidelines, not the North Main guidelines, does the three A design guidelines pass muster?
Well, I don't know that we have separate three A guidelines at the moment.
So I've written them. We, uh, we've, we've, we've written, I don't mean I, Emily and I have, have gone back and rewritten guidelines today. Uh, well, I was waiting until this, I was waiting until we had this discussion before I just introduced more, more stuff. Um, but they're, they're less, they're less perscript- prescriptive. They're more on par with, at this point, we know which communities, I forget which ones they are. We know which communities have had accepted design guidelines. So we're looking at which ones those are. The communities that have more prescriptive design guidelines like Brookline have not been approved. Whereas others who have less prescriptive ones like Lexington, um, have been. So we're using those ones that have been approved, using that as a model. Uh, and then mixing in some of the stuff that we have in our current CBD guidelines to try to make it as tailored to us as possible.
So, so in this reworking of them, do you, do you, do you think that it would still be applicable to North Main Street? Or do you think that we are gonna end up?
No. I mean, I mean, they will be because we want, I mean, we're, we're, we're really working to try to continue, like, have that continuation, right? It, they, we, we wanted to, we want an overlay to, the, the overlay to look similar to the CBD, which we want to look and feel similar to, to G, uh, what's currently GBD two or the future MU one. So we are working to add that stuff in. But because we have the opportunity to have more prescript, more prescriptive guidelines for MU one, we, we really wanna look at Michael's current written stuff as, as the example for that.
Right.
Okay, so we will end up with essentially three different sets of design guidelines.
Why do you say three?
Because we have CBD.
CBD has their own.
And I think, and I think your aspiration, um, is, is perhaps just that and that the, at, the best outcome will be that it has the visual continuity all the way up Main Street. Um, but that the specificity of the North Main Street underlying zoning, um, which we would spend the summer working on and getting it right, would be, um, really beneficial to the corridor.
Yep, I just.
So, 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 so to give you a little bit more examples, some of the stuff that's within some of what Michael has written are awning types, awning sizes. And, you know, that, that we went to the state and asked and they said, no, you can't have that. But things that we can do are saying, uh, uh, suggestion, uh, not, not, not even suggestions. You can go beyond. You can say if you're gonna be doing outdoor lighting, you need to do them to these outdoor lighting standards. Or you need to, um, you, you, you can, you, you can do stuff like that. So it is kind of a it's a mix and match.
It's a spread the needle and we're glad that we have Emily to help us figure that out. Um, so.
So, okay, so we, so we, we still have work to do on that. I just wanna get back to, I think we lost Nick.
Yep. He texted us that he needs to sign off.
Okay, okay, thank you. Sorry to see you go, Nick. Um, uh, but I think that this board needs to make a, uh, a definitive decision as to whether we want to, um, move the presentation of the North Main Street zoning to Fall Meeting for a vote. Which is separate from Main, uh, we could still use the existing article to present it at Springtown Meeting as an update to the work we've done.
Or we don't even put it in this, in the spring warrant, um, and we bring a report of our incredible progress.
We, we can always, we can put it in the warrant and we can pull it at any point. As there's no, you know, we can, we can leave it in there and make it the decision.
Well, that means it takes time away from three A at this very short date, because there's still a lot of work to do to make it warrant ready.
But.
I will say that's my only concern. I know Yi Ching, you brought this up and I didn't really answer it. Is that what, what, how should our time be spent over the next week and a half? If, if, if you really want to know my answer, it's just three A.
For you especially, right?
Yeah, for me, yeah.
Intense. And I think that even just with the design guidelines for three A. Bring it to Z RAC and the public meeting on this Thursday, it will be enough meat for us to, to. You know, go bonkers on.
And I, I think about the number of residential properties that we're going to be abutting as we move up North Main, and we really want to spend some time making sure we've. Heard everybody, so I.
Okay.
So.
But does that mean?
Oh, what, each thing?
Does that mean sending in the warrant then, so that people have, the town meeting gets a sense of what's coming?
No, what we would do at town meeting, instead of having the three, the MU one article, because it's not done. Um, is we would have an MU one presentation.
I understood, but do you think it might be more effective if we had something that was meatier, so that people. Were forced to sit down with it and look at it?
So, so we have, there's two things going on here, I think. One is, um. So if we want to have. A warrant article for MU one. Then we do have to have something substantive to put into the warrant booklet.
And we have something substantive, yeah, but it's not ready for prime time.
Well, then that's, that's, yeah, so if we don't, you know, we have to put something in there. And a simple placeholder, I don't think is good enough. So we either, we either commit to putting in a, you know, an almost there ready, so that we can. Talk about it with town meeting, or we simply pull that article.
I feel like even to have something in there, even if it's not very good, it will take a lot of time out of Taylor's and Griffin's, um.
And I, I know how many hours I'm putting into supporting them to get all these writing things done.
Thank you.
Like I did the thesis table today, I mean, it was several hours.
Yeah.
And, and I, I want the board to see it, and I want Z RAC to see it. And this way we will have time to, um, engage with Z RAC and take advantage of their incredible willingness and insights.
So, so seeing as we're seven of ten right now. Let us, so the decision, the first decision we have is, do we wish, is there a motion to pull? MU one, North Main Street from Springtown Meeting warrant articles.
I will move that.
Is there a second?
I seconded it.
Okay, so the only point that I want to make here is that. That means that the only time we will be able to talk about it at town meeting is during the report from the planning board.
Yes, and I think that we can say many good things concisely.
And it's possible by that time that we could actually put together a. A, um, some sort of description of our status on that. So it doesn't actually has to meet the, the, um. Um, the rigor of a zoning article, but it can certainly point out all of the progress we've made and what we hope to finish, so.
And what is the amount of time that we would be limited to for our report?
We have, we get ten minutes, so it's all a question of what we can fit into ten minutes. And as we know, ten minutes goes by very quickly. So let's, we have a motion in a second, and I, I, do we want further discussion on this, or shall we vote?
No.
Okay, so the motion is to pull MU one, uh. Did someone just say something?
No, that's just my beep, sorry.
Oh, okay, uh, Carrie.
Hi.
Yi Ching.
Hi.
Sally.
Hi.
And I have to extremely reluctantly agree, I'll vote I, and Nick is not with us, so we. Are only going to per, presenting MBTA three A at town meeting.
For a vote, but we will be presenting the North.
Well, that's what I meant, the article, the, the only warrant article moving forward will be the MBTA three A one. Okay. Taylor, is there something else we need to discuss this evening?
No, I've, I, you now have the most recent draft of MBTA in your inbox. It's been reviewed by. By legal, it's been reviewed by Emily, it's been reviewed by Historical Society, it's been reviewed by Design Commission. Been reviewed partially by Z RAC. So, uh, there's a lot of feedback in there, feel free to comment.
Does it have the maps?
Whatever you need. Does not have the maps yet, Griffin and I are working on the maps. Uh, but, but we have the information for, for the maps. I, one, one thing that, that I, you know. I just, I, I want to thank everyone, especially you, Sally. I do want to thank you for all the work that, that, that you've done. I was a little hesitant to bring this up, because I know how much effort that you've put into it. Um, I, I, I'm really impressed with all the work that, that, that we have done. I really do think that this article is going to be really fantastic when we bring it in the, uh, in the fall. Um, I agree with you, Diab, I'm kind of reluctantly bringing this up as well, but I, but I do think that this is really the best choice for. For, for all of us.
Yeah.
And Yi Ching said it, she said, we, and Carrie did too, we need to do it right, not fast. And if fast means November, I'm okay with that.
I guess we all are, because we voted for it.
But I, I, I agree completely with what Yi Ching said, that the quality of our presentation on both of these topics is critical. And, um, so we have the benefit of consultants, we have the benefit of Taylor. And we have the benefit of others who know how to put together a really compelling PowerPoint. Um, including those on our board, and so I think that we should be optimistic. About the positive reception for North Main Street when we presented in our planning board report. And that we should focus on finishing three A and getting it adopted in this town.
And to encourage you that we're not forgetting about it, the, the north end of North Main sort of transitions us to the light industrial area anyways.
Yes, it does.
And our focus.
Um, I do want to, just, just before we leave, I just want to, um, say one thing about the Milton vote. And, and the one big difference, I think, that, that we have to take to heart from the Milton. Is Milton is stuck in this really strange, um, setup, where they are considered a rapid transit community. With, you know, with, and they have very minimal rapid transit going to them, so there was a. You know, the, the leap they had to make to get their three A stuff through was much larger than we do. So I could understand, um, some of the pushback from them, just because, you know, they have this little dinky. Trolley car from the forties, which runs through a few stops in town, and that somehow got them into rapid transit, so.
It has a capacity of thirty-eight passengers and it runs every half an hour during the rush hour schedule.
Yeah, so there's, there's, I mean, I, I think, I think it's, let's be, um, I, I, I agree, Carrie, it's something we should be. We should keep in mind, but I, I think that the level of concern in Milton about what they have to do. I don't think we have to be as concerned here, because we just have much, a much lower reach to make. So, anyway, um, I will get off my, my soapbox. I would really welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? We have a second, so, um, roll call vote, please. Sally.
I.
Carrie.
Hi.
Yi Ching.
Hi.
And I say as well, um, thanks to everyone for joining us. Thanks to Richard Leefar, who just turned his camera on. From the, our Chamber of Commerce liaison. Thanks to our recording secretary, Nancy Polcari. Thanks to Wind Cam, as always, we don't take you for granted. Thanks to Taylor Irwin, town planner. Thanks to all of those who joined us early in the evening and are still with us, Richard Rohan, Marisol, and Brian Vernaglia. Uh, thanks to everyone out in TV land, uh, we will see you all next week. Have a great week.
Night. Good night, everybody.